All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. So good to see everyone here. Really excited about tonight, getting to have so many wonderful people in the room and showing joint cooperation between our incredible city and our incredible county. So at this time, City Council will convene in session for a special session, special City Council meeting on this March, this date, March 19th, 2024. I'm going to invite our County Judge Curtis Parrish next to convene his Commissioners' Court, and then he's going to lead us in prayer, and then we'll have Mayor Pro Tem Patterson-Harris will lead us in our pledges. All right, Judge?
Thank you, Mayor. When we call to order Lubbock County Commissioners' Court, we're sitting in work session today, and as the mayor pointed out, it is Tuesday, it is March the 19th in the year of our Lord, 2024 is 5:30, and we will announce that a quorum is present. At this time, I would ask you all to please rise to join me in an invocation, followed by our pledges of allegiance. Well, Holy Father, thank you for opportunities to serve. Thank you for opportunities that we have to better our community. Father, I thank you for opportunities of cooperation, and I thank you that we have opportunities to meet together, to fellowship together, and to, Father, to work together, to serve your people. I'm reminded, Father, in First Kings, you say, your servant Solomon said, "How can we judge so great a people of yours?" So, Father, grant us wisdom, grant us strength, grant us perseverance, but, Father, more importantly, grant us a heart to serve. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you remain standing and joining with us as we offer the flag of the United States and Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, you may leave.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Patterson-Harris and Judge Parrish. Thank you. So I think, and I'll briefly turn it over to Judge Parrish to address this as well. I think that the intent of tonight was for us just to go through some things and some projects and give some updates, have staff some time to go through some projects. We've also got Lauren here from Ports to Plains, and just give general update. I think a lot of this to me is not just getting updates on important projects, but showing how well we've worked with the county over the years, and I think that is somewhat unique to Lubbock and West Texas, that we want to work together with our county and with our other government officials. And so I think that's very important, us to show that to the community. And so thank you all for being here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Judge Parrish, and then we will start with Agenda Item 1.1, which is Ports to Plains, and I'll let him introduce Lauren.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. This is, the genesis of tonight's meeting actually began during COVID. Many of you were here when we had a joint City Council, County Commissioners' meeting during COVID, because there was a lot of issues that we were dealing with, with both the city and the county. And Mayor Pope and I, at that time, really decided that we need to make this more of a regular thing, where these two branches of government that serve really all of the same people come together to show where we are working together, where we have projects that are going on together, to get a common update, so that we can all be on the same page, Councilwoman, to be able to sit with one another, to be able to talk with one another, and as I said in my prayer, to be able to serve together. So, Mayor, thank you for opening up your incredible City Hall to us tonight, and it is an honor and a privilege to be here and to be sitting with you and serving the people of Lubbock County. We are going to go, well, fairly quickly. We're going to start first with road, with our roads, where we have commonality, and I want to introduce to you, Lauren, please come up if you would, Lauren Gardino. He is with Ports to Plains. Ports to Plains is a project that, if you're not familiar with, goes from Laredo to Canada, and there's been a lot of great things happening with this I-27 now. We're still going to call it Ports to Plains, right?
We can do them both.
We can do them both.
Yes.
But as many of you know, we're very familiar with I-27 here in Lubbock, but now I-27 has been designated from Laredo to Dalhart, and we're getting close to going beyond that. So we're very excited about this. Lauren, thank you for being here. This is Lauren Gardino. Lauren, thank you. Welcome, and look forward to your update on Ports to Plains.
Sure. Judge, thank you very much. Mayor Payne, thank you for the invite. Council members, Commissioners, thank you for letting me be a part of your meeting this evening. I told I had 10 minutes. That's hard for me to do, as you will find out in my speaking, but I will try the best I can. I guess I control the button. Is that correct?
Not really, but that's okay.
Okay, so next slide then.
Oh, yes, on your slide.
Oh, okay.
We were talking about your microphone.
Lauren, you can control whatever you want to control right now, buddy.
Okay, so I'm going to give you a quick update on what's been going on this last year with the Ports to Plains Alliance and your involvement with it. And first thing I'm going to say is, is thank you. Lubbock County and the City of Lubbock have been longstanding members of this, of this organization, this nonprofit organization that is advocating for improved highway corridor through West Texas and then up to Denver, Colorado. A lot has happened in the last year, and I think you'll see this report, there's an opportunity for a lot more to happen to come. I've been on this job about a year and a half now, after retiring with TechDOT, 35-plus years. So I've grown up in West Texas and seen this project, and it's fast times and it's slow times, and I think we're possibly hoping to see fast times again. The next slide that you see there, of course, is how our quarter lays out in Texas and New Mexico, Oklahoma and Colorado. That's just a quick picture of what that is. And the bulk of that quarter, of course, sits in Texas, 963 lane miles in Texas itself. I've highlighted this bullet, these slides in this way. I'm starting in June of 2019 to talk about the study that was, TechDOT was instructed to conduct about the looking at the feasibility of a Ports to Plains being upgraded to interstate standard, and what that impact would be. You know, over the years, our mission has been four-lane divided or better, and then the study was directed by Senator Perry and Representative Ford Price. He signed on it on the House side. What happened was, is that the results of that study showed that there's a major economic impact to build this corridor to interstate standard, and it was enough of an economic impact that actually probably changed and swayed TechDOT's opinion of how they were going to invest in this corridor going forward in the future. Another thing that happened about, just about a year or two before that, and I'll talk about it at the end of my deck, is that US voters passed two propositions in 2014, 2015, Prop 1, Prop 7, oil and gas severance, sales tax. Those two funds are feeding into the Texas Highway Fund, and in essence, in 2016, our highway program doubled overnight, and by doubling overnight, what that means is, is that all of those years, about 10 or 12 of them, that we were kind of not building a lot of corridors, not doing a lot of work on corridors, because we didn't have the money to do so, that light got turned back on, and you're seeing a big investment in corridors all across Texas, including our Ports to Plains corridor. In March of '22, the, you can see those names of those senators from both Texas and New Mexico, and also championed by Congressman Arrington, Cuellar, and Fernandez out of New Mexico, they were able to get portions of the Texas and New Mexico portion designated as a future interstate highway. This came after the study, TechDOT study, that showed the economic benefit to having that bill. And so from '22 on, and then going into '23, Arrington introduced on the House side in '23, a numbering of the bill of the highway. We all just assumed it would be '27, and we assumed that because we've got '27 running from Lubbock to Amarillo, and we always just assumed that. But we could not do that. We had to go back to the Federal Highway Administration, have a conversation with them to figure out what really our true numbering system was going to be. After playing around with some two-digit numbers and some three-digit numbers, and we got into a little bit of, you know, rough waters with that, we finally got Federal Highway Administration to agree on a '27 numbering system that included an east and west designation for our split down there at Midland, Odessa, and Big Spring, and also a north designation for our split at Dumas, going up into the Oklahoma Panhandle. So that was good, because just two weeks ago, you know, finally at the federal level, we got it through on the Senate side, when they got it reconciled, and passed it through on the consent, I guess it's a consent agenda, got it passed, and we now have the Interstate Numbering Act, I-27. We don't have to, you know, we don't have to pretend anymore. So that is, so this pen is not a, not a pretend thing anymore going forward. That slide just shows you the studies, impacts. It may be hard to read, but it really, on the left side, it shows the, you know, the $17.8 billion return on your investment. It showed the benefit cost ratio of 2.4. Anything greater than one, anything that TechDOT spends, they're going to get a 2.4 return on their investment, and that's good to know, because TechDOT's going to have to spend, at that time, that estimate was $23.5 billion to build the interstate from Laredo through Texas, 23.5. I'm guessing that number is low today on inflation. I'm guessing that number's going to be more like 25 or 26 today. But just, so you know, every dollar that TechDOT spends, they'll get a 2.4 benefit return on it, and we think that's the reason we can continue to invest in it going forward. This is what the numbering system looked like, those considerations. I talked to you about the east and the west. You can see that. And then after the study was done, the next legislative session, Senator Perry and other representatives pushed through another bill that actually created a advisory committee, Interstate 27 Advisory Committee for TechDOT, that meets twice a year. You have two representatives, the way that bill was written, you have two representatives in this room that are on it, the Mayor Payne and Judge Parrish, sit on the advisory committee and make recommendations to TechDOT on how we're going to build out our 27 for the future. That original work they did, came up with these numbers, 20, there was 20 recommended interstate upgrade projects, 26 recommended relief route projects, and just for the record, when I started working in highways back in 1983, we called them bypasses, and then we got them changed to relief routes, and now today, if you talk to people, they say, no, we don't call them relief routes anymore. We call them city location studies, okay? And y'all can understand why. And so no longer, we don't refer to them as bypasses, we no longer refer to them as relief routes. We refer to them as city location studies, so that the citizenry of the local city can make a decision on where the route needs to go through their community. And then, of course, we have 32 operational improvements. That, folks, is the list I'm working. That is, that's my charge, is I continue to work through the Alliance. I continually look at that list of 20, 26, and 32, and I continue to work that list with TechDOT to make sure that we're trying to, you know, move the ball down the field as we complete these projects. Something big happened last January, though. I show this slide for a reason. TechDOT in 2016, when they got all that funding increase, they went back to category four, which is corridor money, and they expanded it considerably, and they went back to their Texas trunk system map, which is like 11,000 lane miles of highways in Texas, and it includes our Ports to Plains highway, it includes like future I-69, it includes like other highways across Texas. And they said, how many of these, of these trunk system highways do we need to get to four-lane divided or better? And they found some low-hanging fruits, all those red lines were those low-hanging fruits that are just about nearly completed to four-lane divided or better, but in January of last year, they added our southern segment of our Ports to Plains, in addition to going on down to Brownsville, as a key priority corridor. That means that that part of the corridor is also eligible for what I call their category four corridor funding, to get it to four-lane or divided or better. Note, four-lane or divided or better, because TechDOT's not there and going to interstate yet. It's our job to try to help them get to interstate. So that's good news, because that means we know that we will have a lot of emphasis on funding with four-lane divided highways, at least on most of our segment of our corridor. I have a gap to fill from Ozona, or excuse me, from Sonora to San Angelo on 277. I call that the gap, and I'm looking for federal dollars and other dollars to try to fill in the gap, to try to get a community funding, community, city location studies around Cristobal and other places like that. So that's, that's the work that we have to do. I show you this slide just real quick, just so you know that when TechDOT evaluates the use of their big categories of money, category two is your metropolitan planning organization money. You have a TMA here in Lubbock, made up of counties and cities, and that's your category two money that you get to distribute on projects within the city limits and the TMA boundary. Category four is the corridor money. Category 12 is the, what we call commission strategic priority. Our five highway commissioners get to pick where they put that 12 money, and they spend it on certain things like congestion, energy sector impacts, hopefully interstate upgrades, because we're trying to convince them that that's an important reason to spend their 12 money. What's good for us there is, is 25% of the criteria on the left side, which they're evaluating projects 50/50, 25% of it is based upon connectivity, and 12 and a half on economy, so we know that we got about 37 and a half percent of that 50% is on economic growth and connectivity, which our corridor scores well in. And then on the right side, when you start looking at project performance, we show some good safety numbers in our study, so that's, you know, that's 31% of your criteria for selection of projects on the right side. I'm showing you that slide, because every time you're going for money in the UTP, you got to hit these markers. This is what gets you some good, gets you some good ratings. I show you this slide real quick, because I want people to see kind of where we're at and where we're going. Cat 2, Cat 4, and Cat 12, those categories I just showed you, you can see over there on the August of 2023 Commission UTP, Unified Transportation Program, they allocated $10 billion, that's a billion a year, into Cat 4R, statewide rural. So that's any part of our corridor that's outside of our metropolitan areas. Statewide connectivity urban, they get dedicated $7.8 billion over 10 years. That's 780 million a year, and that's for any of our corridor that's inside the metropolitan area, which would be like within the side of the city limits of Lubbock, for example. That, look at that number there compared to even 23. It's grown by 6.9 to 10, and 5.3 to 7.8, and then I show you the strategic priority. They've got an extra $2 billion added to their strategic priority. Down there at the bottom, their 23 UTP was $100 billion. Back in 2016, when it doubled overnight, it went from $35 billion to $75 billion. So now you can see where we're at in just seven years with our money. I'm looking at the UTP coming this next August, and I heard, I was estimating it would be at least 105, 110, and I was told that number is too low, Lauren. It may be closer to 115 to 120, an extra $15 to $20 billion in their 10-year program, because of the way, you know, Prop 1, Prop 7's coming in, and the Federal Highway Bill's coming in. So pretty amazing numbers, and we need to make sure that we're in position to take advantage of, ever been at, on our projects for our corridor. So, the advisory committee came up with three segments. It involved these two districts, Amarillo and Lubbock. Segment one, on that 20, I'm using that $23 billion estimate, which I told you is a little bit low already, so I may have to increase it. That means, you know, if we're going to build out that corridor in a, well, in a 10-year window, we're going to have to at least see an increase of $450 million a year in the UTP for those two districts combined, added to their program on our corridor. The big districts are Lubbock, Odessa, Abilene, and San Angelo, because a big part of our corridor is there. You're going to, you can see that if we're going to hit that 10-year build-out window, it's, we're going to have to see an increase of about $1.2 billion a year to the UTP every year, you know, it increases that much. And then, of course, segment three, which is mostly Laredo with a little bit of San Angelo around Sonora, you need to see at least $670 million a year increase in UTP. That's just to hit a 10-year window, and that's my goal, because I, Lord willing, will be 70 years old in 10 years, and I really don't want to work on this anymore after that. And I'm just joking. I'm just, I'm just kidding. If I ever fail, we'll keep going. But the point is this, this last UTP, we, we got a billion extra in the UTP, which is about a billion and 1.2 billion short of the 10-year window. So we're like on a 20-year clip to build our interstate out over 20 years at that rate, and so my goal is, is to try to increase that rate in each UTP enough that we can get that window down into, into a shorter window. Realistically, I envision that probably the southern segment three, from Laredo, the 120 miles, Eagle Pass, Del Rio, because of the border security issues, up to Sonora, that key corridor, I do think we could probably hit the 10-year window on it, because I think TechDOT's going to invest in that. It's going to be a little harder for me to find money for the gap between Sonora and San Angelo. I'll have to work that. You've got interstate already from Lubbock North, Amarillo, that's good. The problem is, is Lubbock South is, even though it's a key corridor, it's already four-lane divided for the most part. So, you know, so TechDOT doesn't have a need to go, to go to interstate standard on it. They don't have a funding pot that's dedicated to that. We have to go try to help them find the extra money to go ahead and get it upgraded to interstate standard, and we'll continue to work that issue as we go forward. I'll pause there for questions, because I think that's most of the slides that I have. That last slide there was, we are using the federal, they have opened back up the appropriations requests, small amounts of money. Your senators, your senators really don't like to give money to local communities on the community directed funding. The two senators don't, but your congressmen do, and some of them do, and Jody's been pretty good about, you know, bringing money back to this local area for work on this corridor. So, so we get about, this last year in '24, which just got approved, when they did pass, you know, the part of that budget appropriations, we got $29 million on our corridor, 12 and a half was up in Nebraska, the rest of it was in Texas, and with the exception of $2 million in New Mexico. My goal with those kinds of requests is to try to jumpstart planning, jumpstart the DOTs, and try to get them, you know, moving, you know, in certain key spots. We might have some, what I call, certain blockages. And so I'm using that kind of money request to try to kind of incentivize and get us moving down the road to build this project out. I'll pause for questions.
Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah.
And I will say, just last week, week before last, the Washington DC fly-in, a lot of lobbying going on. One thing that's amazing about this project is how economically beneficial it could be to West Texas, and how truly bipartisan this is. I mean, you talk about it, benefits everybody in these regions. So thank you for your work on this. Ms. Joy?
Yes, I've heard you say that south of Lubbock, we already have two-lane, four-lane divided.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you telling us that in this project, as it begins, that that will just kind of stay the way it is for now? What are, what are you telling me?
Well, and our district engineer's in the room, so he can correct me if I'm wrong. The, well, so I do know that TechDOT has worked at upgrading that corridor south of Lubbock, and they've petitioned the federal government to have, to have it upgraded to interstate standard, to get it approved, to bring it onto the system as a future interstate. And we're, they're in the process, the agency's in the process at the moment of bringing it up to interstate standard. We think, we hope, Lord willing, that this, this spring sometime, we will have an answer and a sign unveiling, that we will actually extend part of Interstate 27 south of Lubbock for about 4.5 miles or so down there to where they were doing that construction. That's the beginning. The Lubbock District, I have visited with Kylan Francis, she's the TPND with, for Steve. She and I visited a little bit about doing some possible studies to see what it would be to bring the rest of that corridor down to Hoca, for example, up to interstate standard, because it may not take very much. You know, you'll have to look at some gray control, access issues, you'll have to look at that, but we may be able to determine that with a minimal amount of investment, we might be able to bring, you know, start bringing the portions of this corridor up to interstate standard, and when we do, then we will petition the federal government to bring that onto the system. And so I do know the district is actively looking at studying that part of the corridor to see what it will take to bring it up to interstate standards. What we're also doing is, we run it, we got a bottleneck at Lamisa, and we are going after some community funding money from Congressman Arrington. We're going to go after some projects, an operational fix, maybe to work through the town of Lamisa. You know, we got to talk to the citizens there, and maybe phase one, phase two. Phase one is just get the operational working. Phase two may be, what does a future interstate look like through Lamisa, to connect the split that goes over on 349 over to, over to Midland. So, so to answer your question, we are going to work to try to get money to bring our parts of the, that are not interstate standard yet, up to interstate. It's just, it's just going to be a little bit different pot of money we're going to have to go after to get it done. Does that make sense?
Yes, and Lamisa was one of the places that I was thinking about, because clearly something major will have to occur there.
That is correct. And so the thought is, is there's possibly some operational improvements you can do on 87 there into Lamisa, that will kind of, what we would say would be the first phase fixed, for the first phase, so that the locals can actually move through there a little bit better. And then the second phase would be, is okay, what, how do you put an interstate footprint? Because we've lost, we've lost the relief, relief route. We've lost it, because that was killed about, about 10 years ago. So we just have to go back and reevaluate it with the city of Lamisa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you very much. Remind me of your name, sir?
Lauren Gardino.
We'll go with Lauren, is that okay?
That'd be great, yeah.
Mr. Lauren, hearing, especially hearing the comments from Ms. Joy talking about the needs in some of the specific areas along I-27, what do we say, or what can be said or shared with your everyday citizen who's not a part of a lot of these conversations, to let them know the importance of the work that's being done along I-27?
Sure, yeah. So, big picture, 40% of your nation's cotton is grown in this, in this area. 40% of your nation's cotton. Today, that cotton goes on trucks over to Fort Worth, gets on a rail, rails right back through Lubbock on its way to Long Beach, California, to get on a train, to get on a ship to go to China. What's happening today, though, is China's going into Mexico, and a lot of the nearshoring, a lot of the textile, a lot of that that's happening, that's happening in China, we think with nearshoring in Mexico, we're going to see it in Mexico. So all of a sudden, it now maybe make more sense for our corridor south of Lubbock to be built out, to get us, get our cotton to where it needs to be, it needs to get to. That's one example. The other example is, 10 of the, 12 of the nation's top 20 feedlots are on our corridor. Cattle is a $12 billion industry in Texas, and not only, it's a $3 billion export with Mexico. So we are working, I mean, the faster we build this corridor out, and we got a lot of ranchers in this part of the world, a lot of cotton growers in this world, you know, there are two primary, you know, two primary benefactors that would benefit. If you work in the oil industry, Lubbock's on the edge of it, you go south on our corridor, you got the Permian Basin, you go to the very north end of our corridor, on our map there, you can see it comes up with Theodore Roosevelt. North Dakota's the Bakken, the same oil companies that are in the Permian are in the Bakken, and we're moving that, although all that oil and gas product is moving back and forth between the two that has to come through this corridor. And then the last thing I'd say is, in Texas especially, 1,200 to 1,300 people a day are moving to the state. If we're going to be in agricultural, in a food, fiber, and fuel corridor, we're going to have to feed the world, and I'm talking that world right now, is residing in Texas, you got to get your, you got to get your crops to where the people are going to need it. And the better we build this interstate out, the faster we build it out, the better we're going to be able to get our feed products to where they need to go. Did that help? Is that too much of an answer?
It helps some, but let me ask you this. Don't leave me.
All right, okay.
Okay. How many opportunities have we had to take that very information to the folks that live in our communities that don't have any idea as to what the heck is going on?
So, I've been on this job a year and five months. I've got, I've got three, I've got a three-pronged attack. It's why join, why support, why build. Why join is membership. It's about, it's about advocacy, that line there. Advocacy is an activity by an individual group, aims to influence decisions, both political, economic, and social, right? That's that Wikipedia definition of it. Anyway, I use that, because I say, you know, I encourage people to sign up for our newsletter. That's a free thing. It didn't cost you a dime. Everybody in this room tonight, I hope, goes home. If you're not in their newsletter, you need to be in our newsletter, because we keep you updated. We ping you with the updates on what we're doing. We're up and down the corridor. I'm willing to speak. I speak in at Lions Clubs. I want to be in Plainview next week. Plainview next week, trying to explain to Plainview why it's still important for Plainview to be, you know, supporting this on an existing interstate, right? Because part of it is, is tomorrow's interstate is not yesterday's interstate. I mean, there's going to be a need for us to bring technology and everything into it. So, to get the message out, you know, we're using all the media that we can to do so, and we encourage everybody to get into our newsletter, because we will feed you information that you can tell people and encourage people about. Stir them to it, because we try to educate people, you know, with the importance of it, and that's the advocacy part of it. That's the why, why join, you know, and when I say join, I don't, you don't have to be, join our alliance, you're welcome, everybody's welcome to, but at least be plugged in, you know, is how you get that message to them. Did that answer your question?
Well, I can stay here all day, and we can keep going, but I just want to hear what's being done, so that the average, your average citizen, and I don't mean that in a negative sense.
No, I understand.
I mean, we've got folks who go to and from the grocery store every day, and they have not a clue as to what's taking place. I will be one of those people here in a month and three weeks, and I, and I want to know how information is going to be disseminated to the folks who work hard, day in and day out, and who don't have anyone to connect them to those pieces. If we're not doing that, I say we need to do it, especially by the time I get there in a month and three weeks. I just think it's important.
I amen that. I will amen that. Yes, ma'am. I will amen that.
A month and three weeks?
56 days.
It is. I just think it's important for our citizens to know and to buy in and say, hey, I'm with that. What can I do to help?
So some of our, some of our performance targets that we're working on as an organization is, where we are working on, will be our outreach, and we will measure how effective we are with our outreach, and that's going to be some of our performance targets. So we, and I'm not just talking about, you know, who, we will look at our demographics. Are we reaching this group? Are we reaching, reaching people that won't? Are we reaching, reaching people that won't use the system? You know, reaching, you know, everything, you know? So, we'll, we'll have those kind of numbers, hopefully, maybe it's over time, I can come back and, you know, show them to you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Mr. Corley?
Yes, sir. I wanted to ask you, the phase of the project that's going to run from, from Limone, Colorado, down to, down to Amarillo, you know, that, that route through there, through Lamar, when do you guys expect to begin work on that, for upgrading that to I-27, or it's going to be to highway standard?
Sure, yeah. So, when the, when the effort went into play to get it to interstate designation, Oklahoma actually was kind of suit on board with it, DOT was, we think maybe they would have been willing to go with it. But we ran into a roadblock with Colorado DOT. Their, their vision is different right now. They, they really want to spend their money on the front range, building public transportation, and sidewalks, and pedestrian trails, and things like that. And they really don't want to, they really don't have a vision really on their freight plan, even, even their freight plan is skewed towards trying to improve something on the front range. So, we got some work to do in Colorado, I'm just being honest with you, Commissioner, that, that our goal is, is to try to at least get it, go back to whatever the DOT is willing to do in terms of passing lanes, and get some of it to four-lane divide standard, we're willing to work with them. We may have to go back into Colorado and try to get legislation to help us direct some studies, especially around Lamar. We got to fix the problem in Lamar. And, and then after that, those smaller communities might be able to wait a little longer, but we got to fix the problem in Lamar.
Gotcha.
And then, that may be the way we approach Colorado.
I'm surprised to hear Colorado's not getting on board with that. That route, I used to travel it pretty regularly. Tons of truck traffic, anybody that didn't want to deal with the grades on, on 25, yeah, going through there, so, okay.
And there's a new, there's a new term in DOTs called resiliency, after these hurricanes in the Gulf, and DOTs are having, how do you build a highway program, a system for resiliency? And I keep trying to pitch that to see, Don, say, listen, when you, when you have a snow and ice event up in Colorado, how are you getting out of there? You know, you're shutting down 25. They had a railroad derailment over the bridge at 25 back in last year, shut down the interstate. Where's your, where's your alternate route? We're trying to advocate, you know, this is the reason why you think about this stuff. So, we got some work to do in Colorado.
Mr. Gardunio?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Yeah.
And, and for your, your leadership in this tremendously important project.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Y'all okay if I head out?
Yes, sir. And I'll echo what Judge said. Lauren, you brought a sense of positivity and rejuvenation to this project. It's been around a long time, so thanks for what you've done. You've made a huge difference, because this does have a huge impact on Lubbock, and they don't, and we don't even know it yet. So, thanks for what you're doing, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good night.
Yeah, yeah.
We, I can give it to you, I could, I'll give it to you when we're done. Sure will. Thank you. All right, we're moving to Agenda Item 1.2, City of Lubbock 2022 Street Bond Update. Eric, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Judge Commissioner's going to be with y'all. Let me pull the presentation up here. All right, good to be with y'all. I'm going to take just a few moments and visit with you about the 22 roadway bond that was approved by Lubbock voters in November of 2022. Before I do that, though, I do want to take a moment and thank several members of my team. Engineering, Mr. Keenum and his team have done a phenomenal job of kicking this project off. Mr. Franklin, as well, in Public Works, has done a phenomenal job. We've really made a tremendous amount of progress in the first 16 months of a five-year project. So, I'm going to go ahead and start and kick off. This next chart will probably look very, or map will look very familiar to you. So, the area in pink is the unpaved roads associated with the project. The area in red are the thoroughfares, and the area in yellow are the residential rebuilds. I'm going to start out by talking about the year one projects that are underway. Before I do that, just a quick summary of various projects. This next chart makes up 17 projects, $200 million spread out over a five-year period. These are the ones that were recommended by the Citizens Advisory Committee and ultimately approved by the voters in November of 2022. Just a quick, quick summary. Design and right-of-way acquisition, obviously, before we can turn dirt, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes with Mike and his team and our consultants. We've got 14 projects that we have kicked off between year one and two of design and right-of-way acquisition. Of those projects, four of those are complete with that process. So, we have four projects that are currently under construction, and the bonds, bond projects appropriated, that's the dollars that council has appropriated through the budget process or through a budget amendment. You've appropriated, the city council's appropriated $106 million of the $200 million. So, we're working on all 14 of those projects currently. So, we have hit the ground running, and like I said, kudos to our staff for kicking that off. As far as what we have for our year one schedule, the chart, the column on the left are the projects that we had committed to designing and doing right-of-way acquisition for year one. Those are all under contract. The ones I really want to focus on are the four that we have, that have completed design, completed right-of-way acquisition, and are now currently under construction, and that is 98th Street, Alcoa to Upland, the 234th Street back of curb projects, Q to I-27, Slide to Quaker. Then we also have kicked off the Dunbar Manhattan Heights, the residential rebuilds. So, let's walk through, through those. So, for starters, you have the Dunbar Manhattan Heights. This is going to be a three-phase project. Two of the three phases are going to be funded with the bond, one of them is going to be funded outside of the bond. But you have, the first phase of that project has been completed by Mr. Franklin, and they oversaw that project. But you, basically, what you see here is the concrete ADA work, that's the first phase of that project. The next piece of that is not funded with the project, with the bonds, but it's the water lines ahead of street paving, which we'll bid this month. Those plans are 100% complete, and they'll be bidding. Once we get the water lines replaced, we'll do some temporary patching, and next summer we'll come in and do the residential rebuilds, which includes a mill and relay, as well as a micro-surfacing. And that will wrap up that portion of this particular project funded in the bond. Next up, we have the 34th Street back of curb projects. Again, this is actually two projects in the original project sheet, that we bid it as one project, since it's very similar in scope. But this includes 34th back of curb projects, Avenue Q to I-27, Quaker to Slide, that's well underway, and we are anticipating completion in October of this year. So, that's looking very, very good, and will be a very good finished product when it's all said and done, so. And then Project Number 4, this is very recent, we had a groundbreaking on February 19th for 98th Street, Alcoa to Upland. Notice to Proceed was issued last month, and we are expecting a completion of summer of 2025. So, that project is going along, and it's going along nicely, so, much needed. And that's going to be three lanes worth of asphalt, so, dirt road today. As far as some other projects, we have kicked off in year two. Again, we're four months into year two. These projects, Upland Avenue, 19th Street to 34th, 114th, from Frankford to Slide, and Upland from 50th to 66th, those are all under design contract, and we're doing design and right-of-way. Those were appropriated and established by the council and approved with contracts for design and right-of-way this year, this fiscal year by the council. As far as what we have remaining that will be under construction later this year, 146th Street, Quaker to Indiana, we are at 100% plans, and we'll be bidding that in April. So, we will bring that, once we get bids, we'll bring that back to council for award to kick off and do another groundbreaking for 146th Street. We have three other projects we have programmed to start construction this year. You have 34th Street, Upland to Milwaukee. That, we're anticipating will be bid in fall of 2024, this year, finishing up some right-of-way. The plans are coming along nicely there as well. Upland, 34th to 50th, I'm sorry, 34th to Upland, 34th Upland to Milwaukee, fall 2024. Upland, 34th to 50th, that'll also be an October, November bid date. And we anticipate 100% plans in June and be ready to bid that. And we have Milwaukee, North City Limits to 4th Street. Will be done with our plans for the city portion of June 2024. I know there's some ongoing discussions with the county about possibly partnering on that project, since the county is anticipating some work north, outside of the city limits on North Milwaukee. So, those discussions are ongoing. And it's really where we are for the first, like I said, 16 months into a five-year project. As far as what's to come, this is probably not, does not look good, looks very familiar to you. There's one I do want to highlight, that's 66th Street, Alcoa to Upland. You do have the second read coming to you to move that up a year into the current fiscal year to allow us to begin designing that in support of the transfer station. So, that's one that we're proposing to move up, that will be up for a second read this coming Tuesday, and we'll start designing it. You can see the projects for next year on the column on the right. There's Year 4 coming up, that we will again, begin construction. The majority of those are already in, in design. If not, they will be in the subsequent fiscal year to put us in a position to be in construction in fiscal year 26. And then Year 5, again, that is one that I've highlighted, 66th Street, Alcoa to Upland, that is one that we will likely recommend that the council move up by a year in support of the transfer station. We also want to be careful in coordinating, coordinating that with Upland, 66 to 82nd. We don't want both those projects going on at one time, so we probably just propose to move that up one year to allow Upland to finish up before we start construction on 66. And with that, I know I went fast, but what, what questions or comments do you have?
Eric, thank you for that update. I think, let's go ahead, with Judge's permission, let's move to 1.3, and then if we have any questions on, and then 1.4, and if we have any specific questions, we can go from there.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, we'll call 1.3, which is an update on the Lubbock County 2019 Street Bond. Want to introduce you to Jennifer Davidson. She's Lubbock County Director of Public Works. Good afternoon, Jennifer.
Good evening, Council and Commissioners. It's an honest opportunity, opportunity here to talk to you guys today to update about what we're doing in Lubbock County. Our programs start a little bit sooner than the city of Lubbock's, but we have a little bit more challenges than that. We, the voters did approve our road bond project, program on May 14th of 2019. They approved us to, entrusted us with $99,650,000 to prioritize the projects that were most important. We have, in the process, we canvassed and talked to every school district, every community that we could, every, any entity that would contribute to. And so, through that, we incorporated some of the CIPs that the city of Lubbock had. We talked about TechDOT's programs. We identified over $675 million worth of transportation needs. How do you prioritize that? What do you do? And so, we started, took a stab, and talked about what we're doing. So, since 2019, some things have changed. Just to help understand, the National Highway Construction Cost Index, from that Q3 of 2019, so quarter three of 2019 to 2023, construction costs have doubled. So, what was priority a couple of years ago, and how we thought we could accomplish, it just is not going to happen today. And so, more locally, and more specific to TechDOT, they track very good numbers. And so, since 2019 to today, in Q2 of February 24, construction costs have increased by 78%. So, we talk about the challenges we have and the money that we've been given, and we're trying to make the best decisions for our transportation network, and for our citizens, and for what we need. And so, we're saying today, and this is our 2019 trip, which is our Transportation Roadway Improvement Program, and the allocations that are there. We'll go specifically into the status of each of these projects, but these are the numbers that we have assigned and felt appropriate that we could accomplish with our $99 million. We have County Road 6900 or West 50th Street, and that's between 179 and Upland. That's a two-mile project. We have County Road 2100. We partnered with the city of Lubbock on that one, and it's ultimately a two-mile project. Woodrow Phase 1, that particular portion is two miles, and we allocated 32 million for that. And then Woodrow Road Phase 2, around, just a little less than $30 million. We did utilize the NPO funding for design for Phase 1 and 2 of Woodrow, and then we also got assistance in the construction of Phase 1. And so, we are trying to use those federal dollars to extend our bond program to go as far as we can. The next project we have is County Road 2300, which is the west side of Lubbock Cooper High School. It is half paved and half unpaved. And so, we allocated money for that. County Road 1500 or Alcoa Avenue, from Marsha Sharp Freeway to 66, including the intersection at 66 there, we've allocated a little less than $1.5 million. Additionally, in County Road 1700, Milwaukee, Eric talked about that a little bit, we have allocated 13, a little over $13 million for that. And in Shawwater, on FM 1294, if you've been through that community, you have the middle school, the elementary, or the intermediate school on the south side of the roadway. You have kids crossing twice a day to go to the north side, which is where the football field and facilities are there. And so, on an FM road in the middle of town, you have children crossing. And so, we are partnering with TechDOT and with the school and the community on that to have a pedestrian-activated crosswalk there.
Ms. Davidson, yeah, I should kind of step a little bit closer to the microphone, so the recording can pick you up.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm a little bit shorter than everybody, sorry. On County Road 2500, this is from 1585 or State Loop 88, south to Woodrow Road, that's a two-mile project. We've allocated them a little less than that. For County Road 7300, which is coming off of FM 400, so this is north of Slaton, down through the canyon, then we've allocated funds there. This past summer, so I'll tell, in 2019, we knew we had some erosion issues on Horseshoe Bend, which is County Road 3600. This is that scenic view. We knew we had some issues and erosion issues with the two intense rain events that we had this summer. We lost pavement, and that roadway is closed right now. And so, we are doing a feasibility study on that particular one. We also have discretionary funds for Precinct 2 that have been allocated. And then also County Road 2900, which is an unpaved road that we converted to pavement. We also have partnered County Road 3300, which is south out of Adaloo. There's some major drainage issues there and accessibility. And so, then also, we've partnered with the city of Lubbock on North University, from Marsha Sharp Freeway North to US 84 for a resurfacing project. And then we have discretionary funds in Precinct 3 that are still available. And then for an overall, overall, we have a $4 million contingency for our construction. So, kind of a status where we're at, the completed projects that we have, talked a little bit more about this, this is County Road 2100, and so this is a two-mile. We started in '21, and we finished up in '22. This is a joint city-county project for a total of $7.2 million in construction. County Road 6900 or West 50th Street, that is a two-mile project. We started in early '23 and finished up before Christmas substantial completion, and that roadway, we got a ribbon cutting for that in December. So, excited about that one, and enjoy the traffic that's going on out there. So, other things that have been completed, city of Lubbock with that North University, we've also executed an interlocal agreement for Woodrow Road from North 20th and Industrial, to Industrial Drive. Our in-house forces have converted two roadways, County Road 2900, we did from FM 40, north to County Road 65 or Erskine Avenue. And then County Road 7700 was identified as a program. We allocated funds and then got unallocated. But this last year, we did convert this, and so, earlier this fiscal year, we converted a portion of that roadway from dirt to Caliche to support while Woodrow is under construction. So, very excited about that. Projects that we have under construction right now is our $38 million project, which is Phase 1 of Woodrow Road. And so, that is from Loop 493, west to Indiana Avenue. And so this is Lubbock Cooper High. And so that is a TechDOT managed construction project. And we started October 31st and we anticipate completion in September of '26. So other projects that we have under design, we have Woodrow Phase Two. We are in right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation for that two and a half mile portion. County Road 2330, which is a portion of Woodrow, that is where we can build roadway pavement down to the Lubbock Cooper bus barn. So as you're going south out of there, that is design complete and we are in right-of-way acquisition for that. County Road 1700, we're 100% plans and right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation. And then 3600, we are in a feasibility study. Projects that the design is complete and plans are ready for construction. County Road 2300, this is on the west side of Lubbock Cooper High School. We also have 100% plans for County Road 1500, but from Marsha Sharp Freeway to 66, plans are complete for County Road 7300. That's going off of the cap. We have plans complete for County Road 2500 or MLK. And then we also have plans complete for 3300. That's the one going out south out of Adaloo. So that's a real quick summary of where we're at and the status of where we're at. And so I guess we'll go to the next one.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson. And and council members, I hope you really kind of got a sense that of how many projects Lubbock County is working on in the city limits of Lubbock. And this has been very important for us because we may designate those as county roads, but even city roads are in the county, if you think about it. So we really looked at this project as serving all of the people of Lubbock County. And you look all over the county and including some city projects as well. And so I thank you, council members, for your partnership with us and for our partnership with you in completing these projects for the betterment of the entire community of Lubbock and Lubbock County. So thank you.
Gilbert, let me get, I think Mr. Corley had punched in first, so we'll jump and then hit that.
Thank you, Judge, for pointing that out. I'd also like to point out Ms. Davidson is also our only county engineer as well. So she's been a one-man band for the last last five years, a one-woman band, and has done a fine job. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Mr. Flores?
Yes, a point of interest, me personally, I'm very grateful that Mrs. Davidson and I were able to work on the North University project from the Marsha Sharp Freeway to the Clovis Highway. A much needed improvement and we've been getting a lot of good compliments on that road and I was I was happy to partner with the city, like the mayor said and the judge. I wish I'm hoping that this will continue. We did use a million dollars of this fund and and donated it to the city, if you will, for that project. I'm looking forward to work again with the city. As you will notice, on the fund allocation, I we spent a million dollars on North University. And then the I was given to spend another million dollars at my discretion, that bond money that we approved years ago. And I would like to discuss another project. And Sheila Patterson, you know what I'm talking about? That's that's the that's East 19th Street between MLK and Loop 29. And I would elaborate a little bit more, I have a million dollars I can offer you, Sheila.
Sir, I have four daughters.
You got a month and
You're offering a million, Gilbert.
But I would like to partner with the city on that project. I wanted to wait till to the economic development topics, La Primo and Star Care and Hope Center that are being built there on 19th Street. You have a police department on the corner of 19th and MLK and going east, you're going to have a lot of traffic there. You're going to have a tremendous amount of traffic. The judge and I were talking about it this morning. We're looking at about 250 trucks coming in and out of that facility every day. So I'm hoping that the people from East Lubbock, my constituents, Sheila's constituents, I'm hoping they're able to find a job there. So it's going to be a lot of traffic there. And you what, First Harries, about 700 people there, what I understand? So I'm looking forward to working with the city on on East 19th. Not very much money, but a million dollars is a million dollars. So please take that in consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilwoman?
Just want to second the thank you for the million dollars to North University. It really has created a lot of pride in that area. And now it's kind of creating a ripple effect. So I want to thank you for that because I know sometimes people might get a little bit impatient when they see the construction, but then the results really make it worth it. So thank you for that. And we'll take another million dollars, Gilbert, if you'd like to offer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson. Thank you for the update. Mayor, we can move on to 1.4.
Yeah, thank you, Judge. We've got Joe Villalobos and we've also got Steve Warren here from TechDOT. Thanks for showing up tonight. Yeah, raise that hand high over there, Steve. Yeah, he's got that Aggie purple on over there, doesn't he? And also thank you, Representative Tepper, for being here tonight. We appreciate you showing up and interest. Thank you all for being here. All right, Joe, floor is yours, sir.
All right, thank you. Let me see if I can figure this out. Well, I appreciate y'all having me here today. I'm Joe Villalobos, Lubbock area engineer for the Tech Department of Transportation. I'm going to go over pretty much the key projects, kind of the ones that are out there that everybody kind of knows are high profile, kind of in the city. And then I'll probably just go through the other ones we have just to have a little overview. So first one is State Loop 88, FM 1585, 130th Street. So the first part is the eastbound frontage road. That was our first phase of construction. So the eastbound frontage road, we've completed our intersection widening, which are the milestones. If you've been out there, we had Indiana Slide, Quaker University. It was highly congested, going from two lanes, widening it all out on that south side. We are planning to detour traffic to that eastbound frontage road within the next month. So 130th Street, 1585 is going to be detoured there. So they'll be on brand new concrete pavement. They'll be going through temporary signals to facilitate the rest of the work we have to go on. The next part is the westbound frontage road, which is the second phase of this project. It's going to be pretty much like your eastbound frontage road. Obviously, a lot of people don't know, but the underdrain, the storm sewer, you're building a whole new road, you got to put all that water somewhere. So that all has to happen first before you go into all of the major construction of the above ground. So with that, you're going to have the north section of intersection widening. So that's those are milestones. Those are going to be University, Quaker, Indiana and Slide widening. So that'll that'll be a major impact, but we always get that information out to the public. Once that is done, then you get into the main lanes. Once once both frontage roads are done, you'll have traffic on the outside. We'll make sure businesses always have access at all times, you know? This is economic development. It's economic growth around here. That's what we're in the business for. Once we develop these roads, widen out to a freeway, you get a lot of businesses coming in. So once we get to the main lane, obviously, it's going to be those major interstate changes at all four. Right now, that's probably a year, a year out from from starting there. There's a lot of work we got to do on the eastbound, westbound frontage roads to get traffic out there. And then we'll be able to move on to that main lane and the actual bulk of what everybody's hoping to see is those bridges out there. So that's just a simple overview of that one. Next one, obviously, is 19th Street, US 62. So I'm sure everybody's knows about this one. There's kind of two phases that I'd like to talk about on this one. So University to Memphis. Obviously, we kind of had a temperature restriction. So with SMA, which is our hot mix asphalt pavement, it has a season. So you typically don't like to place it in cooler temperatures. So that's why we kind of had a delay. But as of today, I'm happy to say that part will be done as of tomorrow. So we're hoping that'll be fully complete right there in front of Texas Tech. They have it tabbed out right now. We should be having striping on it by Monday. So it'll it'll look like a fresh new, brand new road right there next to Texas Tech. So I like that progress on that one. Obviously, the other part that kind of everybody is seeing is I-27 to University. So that area has water lines, storm sewer. It's all the stuff underground that you have to do before you get into the bulk of your project. So they are making progress. We are going, we have sidewalk curb and gutter that's going in. We got some pavement repairs, so we finally got some hot mix put put down out there. Then obviously, the next part, Avenue Q to 19th. We were expecting a major traffic change in the upcoming weeks because we do have a water tie-in right there at 19th and Avenue Q. That's going to be delayed a little bit, just trying to get closer to the end of the school year if we can. So I'm pretty sure with with all that major work that we're going to have in there, we're planning to do water lines, storm sewer, things like that in the summer. That way, we can have less disruption to traffic out of Lubbock High. So those are the major ones for 19th. So the next one, US 84 Avenue Q. Obviously, this one's another one of those that had that delay with weather, time restrictions, temperature restrictions. So it has been a little bit of a delay there. We have completed Marsha Sharp to 34th in terms of hot mix. We should be starting either this week or next week with milling operations, starting to put hot mix down, starting to look like a brand new road. Other than that, we got some manhole water valve adjustments, just kind of some simple things to try to close out this project. This one is actually expected to be done by the end of May. So that'll be nice to have that fully done, fully completed and out of our hands. So this I'll just kind of go into our other Lubbock projects. I kind of had some slides so that it would show each project. I don't know how to do the slideshow, but so I-27 at Yucca Lane, obviously, if you've been out there, that bridge is gone. So they're working on constructing the new bridge. We got the buttments, columns. We're putting a new bridge over I-27. So my district engineer lives out there. He definitely knows about this one. So that one, we're obviously doing the other two braided ramps. They're in poor condition. So Phase One is the Yucca Bridge. Phase Two is one of the braided ramps and Phase Three is the last braided ramp. So that one is about a two-year project, so it is going to take some time. We are right over the interstate for this Yucca Bridge, so it's going to be a little bit of a delay, but we always get that information out. Woodrow Road, so this one, obviously, Jennifer knows about this one. We've been working together on this one. Weber is our contractor. It is from Indiana to US 87, give or take the the loop. So right now, we are in front of Lubbock Cooper. We are working on cement treating or subgrade. They will be putting hot mix, CRCP concrete pavement in front of the school. So we're trying to we're trying to plan that one out too, to do that major part of it in the summer. It might be it'll be beneficial to everyone. That way, you don't have that volume of traffic. It's really hard to place concrete when you're trying to close off driveways. So that's kind of the major one there. Once we get done with that part, it should go a lot smoother once we get out of the school area. The next one is Regis or FM 2641 at I-27. That one is pretty much wrapped up. We've done some repairs. If you see from the concrete on the frontage road, we did some repairs so it could be a smoother transition in and out of there. This one is a little different. We did put traffic signals up. They're not going to go into actual operation because it doesn't meet the requirements for operation. So at as TechDOT, our maintenance are going to go out there, put up some stop signs and they're going to be flashing stop signs. The stop condition works right now. The traffic volume out there doesn't meet the requirements for the traffic signal to go into operation. So right now, it'll be fully complete with stop signs. Next one, 114th Street. So this is from Indiana to Quaker. Right now, we've had that major traffic shift. So from Memphis to Indiana, we have it shut down. The contractor is working to get that fully built, fully opened up. And that is tentatively about July, end of July is kind of the timeline for that. It's it's a full section from the ground up. So they got to do that. And then we should be complete with that one. So I'm sure a lot of people will be happy with that one. 114th Street has kind of been hanging out there, but we're getting it, we're getting it working, we're getting it going. Kind of some other simple ones, I-27 at 1294, this is just a bridge repair one. We do have traffic detour down to one lane. So we are doing some bridge repairs. We're we're making some some repairs on that bridge, making it better, making it longer lasting. So at the end, we'll have a lot smoother surface. And then these last two, so the Buffalo spillway, which is the Indian Crow out on Buffalo Lake, we're doing some bridge repair. But over water, we do have environmental concerns, so that's something I have to watch out for. And then the last one is Upland. This is going to be from 66 to 82nd. So this is one we're working with the city. We're doing a widening project and that roadway will be widened out. And it should be starting in the next couple of months. It's been let, it's been awarded. We're just waiting for that authorization to begin begin construction. Other than that, that's all I have. I always put this on here just because safety is top priority around us. So we all know what happens out on these roads. I'm out on these roads every day, so just like to put this out there.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate you very much. Did were you going to put Steve's self personal cellphone number up there so we can direct calls on 19th Street to him or?
I get to take all those calls.
All right, well, I think we're going to take about a 10-minute break and then we will come back in and continue on with agenda. Oh, I'm I'm sorry, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, you had a question?
I was just going to ask about the lights on Avenue Q. I know that we're waiting for all the construction to be completed, but is there not any way to get those lights turned on?
You talking about the actual illumination type of lights? So that so 19th and Q have both been kind of a struggle with that change from LPNL to actually the, I guess, choosing your provider. So it's been a hassle to try to get that power turned on and those lights turned on. We are working, we are working to try to get all that illumination on. The traffic signals themselves is a different issue, but to try to get that power, try to get all those tie-ins has been has been a struggle with that change.
And then my other question is, where do you do status reports on where you are on the different projects? Where can we find that? Like, is it being relayed on radio, on websites, on a sign?
Typically, I don't think we have any status updates like that. I'm always available for questions, comments. Diana's always there, she's our PIO. So if you have any questions, she always comes to me for those updates, too. We obviously, anytime there's a major impact, a major traffic shift, major change, we always get that out to the public. We try to do it. If it's not as big a change, we try to do it at least a Friday before it changes. If if it's a major change, we try to do it at least one to two weeks before it. That way, we have forewarning and then we do have message boards that go up and kind of detail out what what's going to happen. Maybe there's going to be a change or something like that. But I'm always open. I'm always in my office or phone, email. So if you need anything, I'm always here to help, give give all that communication.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Mr. Corley?
Yes, sir. I was going to ask about the update for FM 41 and I-27.
Okay, so that one actually isn't mine.
Oh, okay.
But we are going through like contractual remedies. We don't have a contract with the contract anymore. So it is TechDOT owned right now and I won't go into any more details unless my district engineer wants to give an update, so.
Ms. Joy?
Do we have an opportunity to ask about projects in Lubbock County that we just went over a few minutes ago before we break?
That'd be fine, council member.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Davidson, I guess we'd need her back. Real quickly, I'm interested in the project on North Milwaukee.
Yes, ma'am.
From where our project stops and you all are going to go to the Clovis Highway, is my understanding. Is there funding for that project?
There is funding. It is not complete funding. We are going to have to go back and look. And so we have 13 million allocated, but that also includes design. So no, it is not fully funded.
So how much do you anticipate is going to increase? Or are you that far along?
So we have 100% design set and we are short. And then so we are going back, I've asked the design engineers to go back and we are going to look at value engineering to reduce that estimate at the moment. And so how much short we are, it'll depend once we go back through the value engineering.
Okay, so right now, we are in design phase. Where would you anticipate completion of that project?
I don't have a timeline on that. And we are moving forward with right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation. We are partnering with the city of Lubbock on that. And so we are at the same place in our projects and so we both have 100% plan sets. We have not had the conversation about the timing of the letting because acquisition is not going as quickly as
So we don't have right-of-way acquisition completed, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Dr. Wilson, do you have questions for Jennifer or Joe?
I do, yes. So looking at District Five, and we've talked about transfer station a lot with Sidney and County, looking at Alcove, so I kind of have the same questions like Ms. Joy's asking. I know inflation hit the county in this bond project very hard and so money kind of got shifted around. And we talk about things that have been allocated realistically, you know, moving forward with where the projects y'all are in 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 current construction. What kind of money is left, looking at these leftover projects that are on y'all's list? Like truly, what kind of money is there to move forward on these projects like Alcove or North Milwaukee?
So there there is not funding available in the bond program and so it'll have to be through other avenues. And so Alcove Avenue is one that Lubbock County has assisted the city of Wolfworth in requesting NPO funds. That is a very beneficial project and so we've talked about the submission of the tip. And so we were in NPO this morning. And so if it gets approved in the 2528 tip, it could be funded through federal transportation dollars if it if it makes it through that. And so we the allocation that had the money that has been allocated for Alcove is the design funds and construction supervision.
So Ms. Davidson, so you really don't have a timeline for completion of Alcove?
We do not.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. I guess you're off the hot seat.
Okay.
Canada. All right. All right, let's, what do you think? Eight minutes? Let's come back.
Eight minutes works.
Six fifty five and we'll, we'll give it a couple more minutes past that. Six fifty five will be in recess. We hit our six fifty five mark. I've been instructed to call this meeting back into order. Now we're going to move to agenda items number two. And we'll first of all start back with the Lubbock Public Health. All right, Catherine. You are.
I am up.
Up.
All right. Well, thank you, City Council and Commissioners Court for allowing me to give you an update on where we are with our city-county health department. If you remember, the last time that this group met, we had conversations about expanding our city health department to cover our county residents and officially creating that joint city-county health department. We entered into an agreement for six years. The county is supporting the building of a new public health facility. In exchange, we're pushing out all of our public health services to cover the entire county. And I'll just give you an update on where we are with that project. First thing, when we created a new city-county health department, we actually had to rework our Board of Health. So the Board of Health has nine members in the agreement between the city and the county. We are giving three, we now have three county appointments on the Board of Health. Those appointments are Dr. Jumper, Cindy Jumper, who works for Texas Tech Health Science Center, Dr. Adam Finger, who is an environmental consultant, and then Crockett Tidwell, who is a pharmacist with United. Very excited to have all three of them on the board, very excited about having a physician and a pharmacist. It's been a long time since we've had some people with those backgrounds serving on the Board of Health, and they're great advisors to me. I've also been working on doing some additional outreach around our school districts so that they all understand that the health department is here to serve them. I've met with every superintendent in the county, along with my assistant director, Rachel Dolan. We talked about what their greatest health needs are. We also talked about our public health emergency plan and how that impacts the school districts. So really great meetings, some of the bigger concerns around the school administrators who are vaping, youth drug use, alcohol use. So hopefully in the future, we'll be able to go after some grants to expand services out to those areas. Another exciting opportunity we had, because now our health department is covering some rural zip codes, we're actually eligible for some rural funding. So the health department received funding from the Bureau of Justice around reaching rural communities around substance use disorders. So we had a work group that was funded by this grant. We had a member of Lubbock Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, Lubbock Public Defender's Office, and some of our treatment providers, looking at what we can do to support some of our rural communities, both in Lubbock County and then also those surrounding counties, about getting more prevention out for substance use. And this grant with the Bureau of Justice should lead to additional grant funding for some services. And then we're also looking at how to expand access to childhood immunizations. After the COVID pandemic, a lot of our children became behind on those core vaccines that we've been giving for twenty, thirty years. So a lot of kids could possibly not be able to attend school if they don't have their vaccinations. We started a partnership with Lubbock ISD where we took our mobile vaccine bus out to the schools. The school nurses sent home permission slips. Parents could sign the consent for their child to receive the vaccines. We could go in and give the vaccines from that mobile bus. Through that initiative, we vaccinated over three hundred students and gave over seven hundred vaccines. The great part about that is mom and dad didn't have to take any time off of work and the school got to keep the kids in the school system so that they didn't have an absence from a medical appointment. So we're looking to expand that model to all of our school districts in Lubbock County for the beginning of the twenty four, twenty five fiscal, or school year. Another project that we're working on is our community health needs assessment. I hope all of you have received emails from me about this. This is looking at how to build a healthier Lubbock, Lubbock County. The process for this needs assessment, we did the kickoff in November of twenty three. We're currently doing key informant interviews. We'll be doing in-depth interviews with forty community members. In April, we will have ideas exchanges, which are community meetings where we're seeking input on people's greatest concerns around health and how they think public health, or the public health department can support them. If anybody's interested in attending those meetings, that QR code will take you to the registration. We'll have refreshments, so we're just trying to get head counts. In April and May, we'll also be launching a community survey. The final result of those, of that, of all of that work will be done in June of this year, and then we will be working with the Board of Health to develop a strategic plan over the summer of twenty four. And that's really how, what the public health department should do to help move health in Lubbock forward, help to improve health for everyone. The other thing I'm very excited about, and this is where the money from the county is directly impacting our community, we will be opening a new public health department late this spring, early summer. The construction should be done in May of twenty twenty four with staff hopefully moving in June, early July at the latest. The location, I put the location on here because I always forget, twenty fifteen, Fiftieth Street, so Fiftieth and U. It's going to be a twenty-six thousand square foot building. And in that, we're going to house all of our public health staff and our environmental health services staff. When I started as Health Department Director in Lubbock, we had ten staff members. We were in a rental facility. I now have fifty-five staff, and then we have another twenty or so with environmental health. So it's going to be a great, great building. It's going to have a community classroom. It's going to have a place for teens that are in our substance use programs. It's going to have new clinical space, administration, and I am finally getting a window. So thank you. And then the last major thing happening with the health department is actually an expansion of our clinical services. So because this new building is being built, we're actually going to have state-of-the-art clinical rooms, and we can actually expand the clinical services that we're providing at the health department. I've been working with one of the hospitalists at University Medical Center around what we can do to help individuals that are coming out of the hospital system who don't have access to primary care. So they might be discharging, so they're not sick enough to be in the hospital anymore, but there isn't a primary care provider in our community that can take them right away. So what we're building out is called an intermediary care clinic, and it's to act as a stopgap for those individuals that are coming from the hospital. We're going to take care of them for thirty to ninety days, help stabilize them, help them get enrolled into either FQHCs, or if they have insurance, enrolled with a private provider, and support them so that they don't, so that they can have a nice, clean transition back into the community. So this is going to be a two-year pilot project. We are partnering with Texas Tech Family Medicine. They will be providing the physician services. And then we will also be utilizing some of our public health infrastructure grant money that came down from the CDC over the last year to hire community health workers that will provide patient navigation services with the individuals that are going into this clinic. And then we're also working with the FQHCs to build a pipeline so we can easily move people from our clinic into those FQHCs. And that is my update on what we are doing with the health department, and thank you so much for allowing me to lead this initiative.
Thank you so much, doctoral candidate Wells.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, soon to be Dr. Wells.
Next time you meet, I'm going to be Dr. Wells, I promise.
The funding that the county and the city did, each entity contributed three and a half million dollars of ARPA funding. I think we need to make that clear to everyone for that project. So the rest of it is up to the city and the county in terms of operating that, that type of thing. So just, just a reminder.
Councilmember Patterson Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Judge. I had to shift on that.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say a huge thank you to all involved. I remember what our health department looked like when I first became a part of this organization, and to sit here and see how it's evolved, if you will, into something that can really benefit a lot of citizens. I, I know that when I first got on the council there, some of the things that hit me in my face were citizens who found themselves without care.
Yes. And that's part of what drove this clinic.
Yes, I tell you what, my friend. And to see it come to fruition so that we can help individuals who find themselves in that space is more than awesome. And so I appreciate the hard work. Mr. Jared, I appreciate the new building and all of that that's going to be, go and be a part of this blowing the mind of the community. I can't think of anything else to say, but just to see us having walked along with the county to, to this space is really huge. I can't even imagine the number of citizens that it will really benefit more than we even know. So thank you. I just, I just wanted to take the opportunity to do that.
Thank you very much. And, and thank you, Catherine, for, for your diligent work and, and for helping us, the city and the county, to, to partnership, to build this city-county health department. It means a lot. And for your efforts out in our rural areas as well, and, and reaching out to, to all of the citizens of Lubbock County for their health care. I know that this was kind of birthed out of the pandemic.
Yes.
And, you know, when, when we look back and when the, when the story is finally written on this pandemic, we're going to see some really incredible blessings that have come out of this. And, and I think one of the blessings we're going to see is the way the city and the county has worked together to provide good, quality, adequate health care for all of the citizens of Lubbock County. So thank you very much.
Thank you. People across the country are really looking at the model and how we're using ARPA funds to build this, and I think we'll see many stories in the public health literature about what's going on.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item two point two on our agenda, which is an update on the Hope Center. I want to introduce Beth Lawson. She is the CEO of Star Care Specialty Health Systems. And of course, she's going to tell you about some exciting news that are coming up in about a week and two days, I think, one week and two days. So I'll turn the podium over to Beth Lawson.
While they are sitting up, I couldn't help but notice Judge Farmer is sitting out in our audience. So good to see you, Judge. I know twenty-five years ago, when I started at the District Attorney's Office, she could have never imagined that I would be sitting in the seat that I am. Thank you, Judge, and all of your board members for being here tonight.
Okay. Very good. All right, let's see. Are we teed up for me? I still have Catherine's proposal.
Up the top, click where it says Star Care Hope Center update.
I got it. I got it. Right on, I'm telling you. Well, thank you very much. No shade about my readers. See, I print it big enough so I don't have to wear them the whole time. All right. Thank you all for allowing me to be here. I want to say good a, I was going to say good afternoon, but I'll say good evening. Happy first day of spring. And for those of you who were with me earlier, happy Ag Day. It is National Agricultural Day, for those of you who were at the Fiber Mac Center earlier. It is my honor to be here today to give you a status report of an innovative joint project, city, county, community. It's a building project known as the Hope Center. When thinking about my presentation and saying, okay, well, how do you sum up all of the work that's been done over the last many months and years in seven to ten minutes? I said, well, how to do that? And I think, you know, probably just answer the questions I get asked almost every day. And so I, that way you don't have to go to the end. I'm going to tell you, when is it going to be open? What is it going to look like and is it going to come in under budget? So spoiler alert, we have June first, twenty twenty-five as the date of opening. We do know that you will be able to see some pictures here, and then I brought some in our PowerPoint presentation also about what it's going to look like. And considering we have some of the best partners in construction and architecture and engineering, I can tell you, we are going to come in under budget and on time. A quick reminder that this project, I'm in charge of myself here. Okay. Now I got it. We, a quick reminder, this project, without the impetus of Texas Tech University, would not happen the way it is. Texas Tech System brought all these community partners together to form the West Texas Mental Health Collaborative, and without the initiative that they brought together to fill the gaps and address mental health needs in our community in such a profound manner, it would not have happened. We would be remiss if we didn't say we owed Texas Tech a debt of gratitude for being the convener of progress. My next slide is a representation and a shout out to all of our Hope Center Steering Committee members. We do have the Community Foundation of West Texas, Texas Tech Mental Health Institute Initiative as our facilitators, and of course, our members from each of the founding parties of the West Texas Mental Health Collaborative. Councilwoman Joy represents the city of Lubbock. Judge Parrish represents the county of Lubbock. I represent Star Care, Dr. Opperman, Texas Tech. Dr. Jumper, you heard her name earlier tonight. She and Dr. Opperman represent the system and the Health Science Center. Dr. Lotta Johnson, she just joined in place of Dr. Amy Thompson with the Covenant Health System. And then Dr. Mike Reagan, who is here, a dear friend of mine and also a important member of the steering committee. We also have proxies because there are times when these important people cannot be in meetings, and so I want to recognize Commissioner Kovar, who represents the county as a proxy for, for Judge Parrish, and then also Mrs. Wells. She represents the city as a proxy for Latrell Joy. And then my proxy is here, Robin Johnston. Thank you. Did I miss anybody? Well, Steve Warren is here. Oh, that one. Yeah. Of course, Professor Shannon is the proxy for Dr. Opperman for the Texas Tech System and a very important board member of ours. So I would like to say, on behalf of the people who will be well, well cared for by the hopes, or in the Hope Center, I extend my personal gratitude to everyone, sir, who serves either as a member of the West Texas Collaborative or as a member of the Hope Center Steering Committee. You know, I think it's important sometimes to just stop and take a moment, and this is. And this moment, I want to say, it's actually an observation. Systems don't collaborate. System leaders collaborate. And it is the system leadership of all of these organizations that have come today to ensure that the people that are going to receive services in this building receive the care that they are, that they need and that they so desperately, well, need. So finally, I will say, our partner, most of you already know this, because we've talked about it before, our partners with architecture and engineering are Park Hill. And again, a very important partner of ours is Kelby Sue, who is a partner within the firm and also the Director of Healthcare Services. And he's here tonight to support our project. And some of you may know this, and others may not, it's the first public announcement of our construction partner, Lee Lewis Construction, Inc. The Hope Center Steering Committee already knows this, but I would like to point out that Dr. Ryan Lewis is the Chief Operations Officer with Lee Lewis Construction. He is a board-certified emergency medicine physician. He has actually worked with patients who have come to Sunrise Canyon Hospital, come through us, through the emergency room at UMC, who have availed themselves of some of our diversion services. And as a expert, a subject matter expert in all things joint accreditation, how health and safety works with safety and security of the public, we cannot be more proud to have him the lead for Lee Lewis in this construction. So thank you, Ryan, for being here. So what is it going to look like? Well, here's the public entrance. And so you may remember that in the design phase of the Hope Center, the Steering Committee unanimously approved that some work be done simultaneously with the expansion that is Sunrise Canyon Hospital. There are certain clinical efficiencies that can happen by co-location and also economies of scales for things like one reception, one HVAC unit, one right away. So we're really excited to show this facility tonight. This is the site plan for the facility, right at the corner of East 19th and Aspen. Commissioner Flores, I'm so excited about that million dollars. I am not even, I am not even kidding you. I pulled John Osborne aside back there tonight before the meeting started and said, what about this? What about this right here? You know, we really need, we really need a roadway that will support our first responders. And so I just think the irony and really Godwink is pretty awesome. Right, Sheila? Yes. And so you see here the site plan, you see that there will be a first responders entrance, and then we will also have a public entrance. For those of you who have been here at least for the last three years, the first time I was here, I talked about drive in, drop off, and drive away. This is what I meant. I am devastated that our law enforcement partners are not here. They're always in the back of the room, Mayor. Did you send them on a detail? I know they have a big day tomorrow. Who knows, right? Well, I mean, our sheriff's office, I mean, they're always sitting right on the back row, but this is what we mean. We are partnering with our law enforcement, our public safety officers, to be able to have the in-site, in vivo services to where if you have a patrol officer coming in, they can drive in, we have a portico, and then they can drop off and drive away, even for a patient on an emergency detention. Each one of us had lots of conversations about emergency detentions, and so we are very, very glad to be able to show you this tonight. A little bit more detail, the public entry and lobby, kind of an example of the economies of scale that have happened because of the Sunrise Canyon expansion and the co-location of the Hope Center, are that you'll recall in the contract, the ARPA contracts for the Hope Center itself, it calls for approximately 10,000 square foot building. Well, because of this co-location and because of the economies of scale, the actual clinical space for the Hope Center is 9,555 square feet. The community partner meeting room is 522 square feet. So that in and of itself exceeds 10,000 square feet. So even without the front door, or the lobby, or the reception, or any of the entrance for public, we've exceeded what we were able to, what we were actually called to do in this contract because we're partnering with state infrastructure money. So we're really, really excited about that. You'll see the Hope Center itself, the clinical area can be thought of, and you can see it here, it's not as well delineated here as it is up on the screen, there are really two sections. There is a, there is a section of the clinical area with the crisis, very crisis emergency area where law enforcement will bring people in, the first responders, it might be the fire department, it might be the EMS, it might be, or a family member might bring somebody in the public entrance. But that area in red that you see on the slides, that's really where all the assessment and all of the crisis mitigation will happen. And from that crisis mitigation area, a person will be assessed and will be stabilized, just like you would be in an emergency room for another physical ailment. But in addition to that, you can have the disposition of a person go to a less acute service, like they can go home from here and have support from Star Care, maybe example, assertive community treatment, which is a step-down service from hospitalization. In addition to that, a person might need a little bit of extra support, but not all the way into an inpatient unit. They can go into the green area, which is the 23-hour observation unit. And then from there also, however, if a person needs a more substantive level and more intense level of care, that person will be able to go immediately into the inpatient unit. The beauty of this co-location of this project is that originally, when we talked about this, we were going to have separate buildings, and we would have to take a patient from inside the crisis center outside through the parking lot into the hospital. That is no longer the case. The person is going to be able to go straight from the crisis center into the hospital without having to go outside, which is a much better, much better modality of care. You can see in the original timeline that we had in our contract with the Steering Committee or approved by the Steering Committee, we had to make some changes. You've heard from Jennifer, you've heard from Lauren, you've heard from everybody. For a minute, I thought I might have been invited, that Lauren Lawson got invited to this meeting, I thought y'all might have wanted to talk to Dr. Lawson about some civil engineering, but here we are. We do know that funding, cost of materials, shipping delays have caused a problem, but we have updated our timeline, fully approved with construction documents by the Hope Center Steering Committee, that June 1st is our day. We will be done with construction of the Hope Center, and we will be open on June 1st of 2025. So to think through the next steps in groundbreaking celebration, you have probably gotten about 15 invitations to the groundbreaking celebration, which is next Thursday, not this coming Thursday, March 28th at 1:30. Mayor Payne will be there speaking, Judge Parrish will be there speaking, Senator Perry will be there speaking. And late breaking addition, I've got John Osborne to talk a little bit about Star Care as an employer and as an economic driver for District 2. And in terms of next steps, it's important to realize that this is a building in which services that already exist are going to move. That was step one of the expectation in the ARPA contract. That was $3.5 million of city ARPA money, $3.5 million of county ARPA money, and that was a complete out-the-door, the public works, everything to support the Hope Center. But that's not the end of it. What we do need are services to expand because we know our work is not finished. So we knew that originally we would move our existing services, our 24/7 walk-in crisis, 24/7 law enforcement drop-off, observation unit, et cetera. However, there was an expectation, not only on the part of Star Care, but all of our community partners, that we would work together to secure additional funding to expand services to fill gaps that are currently in our service delivery system. For example, discharge planning for people who leave jail, who may not have a place to go. People who leave the 23-hour observation unit, people who leave the hospital, Sunrise Canyon Hospital, UMC, you already heard the soon-to-be Dr. Wells, talking about people who get dismissed from UMC and other hospitals without a place to go or without care. That happens in the world of psychiatric distress as well. And so what we are looking to do is to expand the front-end prevention of crisis services and the back-end bookend off of post-crisis services and also peer support. Peer support is a very important aspect of what we do, knowing that people with lived experience are very well-versed and very well-positioned to help people in a psychiatric crisis. Okay, so enter Senate Bill 30, Construction Grant for Mental Health Facilities. When the economy is good in Texas, it's good for everyone. It's a little paradox in that when there is inflation, we do pretty well at the Treasury. We have oil prices, oil and gas go up, and so our tax revenues go up in the state. $100 million was allocated by the Senate Health and Human Services Committee that was actually chaired by Senator Colcorst out of South Texas, and then co-chaired by our very own Senator Charles Perry. And $100 million of one-time projects for shovel-ready mental health facilities was allocated in the last legislative session. Recently, the request for applications has come out from the Health and Human Services Commission. And so what you see in this slide here is something that the Hope Center Steering Committee had talked about from the very beginning. We knew that those acute care services of the crisis center, the extended observation unit, were the first of what we needed to do because we were literally providing services out of a closet. We were way, way too small at Star Care in retrofitting a building in the past. And so the ARPA-funded building gets us the 10,000-square-foot Hope Center. With that, we have always had plans to bookend the services pre and prevention area, and then also the discharge area. So this funding is out and available now. We are very fortunate in our community, again, a debt of gratitude to Texas Tech, having pulled together the West Texas Community Collaborative well, well, many years ago. The eligible applicants are county-based collaboratives. So the two partners in the collaborative have to be a county, obviously, and the local mental health authority. But what they have talked about is the more, the better in terms of community partners, a hospital district, a private hospital. For us, we have an academic institution and an academic health services center, a health teaching hospital. And with that, we are a very, very strong applicant. So we are applying and just found out recently that the ARPA funding from the city and the county that have flowed to this project count as match for this grant. We didn't know it would. We kind of were afraid it wouldn't. Because Lubbock County is over 250,000, well over 250,000, our match percentage is one for one, so $1, $1. So all $7 million will be able to be used for match. The Steering Committee has voted to allow for that. And then also knowing that letters of support are a big driver, showing that there is skin at the local level, that each of the parties of the West Texas Community Collaborative have agreed to sign a letter of support. And then in addition to that, we have several other community partners that benefit from the Hope Center and what it means both before and after crisis services. So fingers crossed that we will be a strong applicant for these funds. And if we do that, we will be able to immediately expand services on the ground. And Dr. Lewis assures me that we will be able to do that at the same time as we open the rest of the building. All right. And in case you forgot, we're having a groundbreaking next Thursday, and I would love to see you all there. In case anyone needs, and for the record, I know at the public meetings, you have to have a record of who's speaking, so here's my name, my title, and my contact information. But also, if you need to get in touch with me, please feel free to do so. I could talk to you a lot longer than seven to 10 minutes about this really important project.
Ms. Lawson, thank you very much. I do want to reiterate again to council and to commissioners that what we're talking about is a one-to-one match, and that means that our joint $7 million will turn into $14 million. And I'm telling you, that is huge. And, you know, as Catherine Wells talked about earlier, with the city-county Health Department, and that how entities all over the nation are really looking to Lubbock, how did you do it? What's the Lubbock way? How's the Lubbock plan? The same goes for this collaborative effort and what we are doing here in Lubbock. We've got entities all over Texas, all over the United States, looking at Lubbock. How is Lubbock doing it? So thank you for telling the Lubbock story, Beth. We appreciate that so much. And it is, it's absolute joy to be able to work together. And we know that when entities work together, a lot of great things can happen. And so thank you very much for what you're doing. Commissioner Flores?
Yes, Ms. Lawson, the day that you came to address the court, back then, I identified you with Star Care, and that expanded my interest on East 19th, that's why I said what I did. And you're going to build this huge building. I believe in one of the most beautiful areas in Lubbock County, in Lubbock, Texas, and overlooking the, is that Dunbar Lake? The Big Lake? So it's going to be nice for that neighborhood. My question to you only is, new hire, what do you anticipate that, how many more folks are you going to hire?
Right. Well, you know, that's a constant struggle and a constant question that we have in healthcare in general, particularly with COVID. We've talked about COVID here quite a bit. But we do know that with our hospital expansion, we're doubling in size. And so we are going to double the size of our workforce that is out in East Lubbock today. Plus, we are also going to have other support services that are going to be coming into the community and using that building and working in that area. And so I, John would really be a better person to ask about the economic inflation factor that that's going to bring to the community. But I can tell you personally that Star Care keeps Sonic at 19th and MLK open.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lawson, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. And we look forward to a week from Thursday, this most important groundbreaking. So thank you very much for your presentation. Mayor? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say in closing, to thank you all so much for the investment that you have made in the community where we all live, for the people who we all call neighbors.
Indeed. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Mayor?
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Beth. All right, we're now moving to Agenda Item 3, Discussion of Economic Development Projects. And we have Breonna Brown here to present Agenda Item 3. Breonna, the floor is yours.
Good to be with you, Judge Parrish, Mayor Payne, county commissioners and city council members. I am aware that I'm the thing standing between you all and your dinner, so I will be brief and I will be gone. But I'm excited to be here with you all tonight to share a little bit of an update on some of our major economic development projects that have taken place over the last year, 18 months to two years. None of these projects are going to be new to you. So really, what I would like to do tonight is just give you an update and give the public an update on where some of these projects are. As we know, construction challenges, inflationary challenges, things like that have caused a lot of projects that we've talked about tonight to take longer than we had hoped for. for and cost more than they, we had hoped for. And so that is impacting our new companies coming into Lubbock as well. So pleased to be with you tonight to give you a quick update. And we will start with La Prino Foods Company. If you are not familiar with this project, you've not been listening to Mayor Payne because he does love to talk about the influx of cheese that is making its way into the Lubbock economy. I took this picture yesterday morning, so it is fresh off the press, but the project taking place at East 19th Street in the Loop is absolutely unbelievable. It, it's really a sight to see. I can't believe that that's right here. And La Prino's going to be our next-door neighbor. It's, it's truly a community-altering project that we don't get to see very often. And so we're really, really proud of this company and what they're doing. As a reminder, they are building, they're under construction on an 850,000 square foot dairy manufacturing facility. They also have their own wastewater treatment plant on site, so you will see two very large-scale construction projects if you go out to see what's going on. Investment amount has climbed to over $1 billion, is the last reported number, and they anticipate creating 600 jobs. And some of those jobs are posted on the La Prino website now, if the public is interested in, in looking at that for a future place of employment. They are anticipating completion in February of 2025. I'll move now to Plant Agricultural Systems, or Plant AS, as you might have heard them referred to. This is both a physical and digital infrastructure company related to localized food production. So what the public will see when they drive by the site is a bunch of greenhouses. But Plant AS is also a leader in technology innovation in the food industry. And so that's kind of the behind-the-scenes part that the public won't see, but will have a tremendous impact regionally and globally on the way that we purchase our produce. They are going to be located just north of La Prino, at East Loop 289 and Erskine. Their investment amount is $670 million, and they plan to create 900 jobs. It's going to take probably about 10 years for them to ramp up to that capital investment. But we did, they were in town a couple weeks ago, and John Osborne's team and myself had a meeting with their leadership team. They are anticipated to start construction in late summer, early fall of this year on greenhouse number one, and that should be completed by the fall of 2025. So it's about a 12-month build for each greenhouse that they put up. So if you see them break ground on one, then you know about 12 months later, it should be operational. And that first greenhouse will be growing leafy greens, so lettuces. Next project is Duraline. This is the company that is going into the second speculative building in the Lubbock Business Park, Lubbock Logistics Center 2. They are going to manufacture plastic conduit for fiber optic lines. This announcement was several months ago, and because of some of the things that we talked about earlier, delays and construction material and some inflationary issues, they have delayed their start date, but we anticipate we'll start to see construction taking place out there in the next 30 days, which is exciting. Obviously, the building is complete on the outside, so their, all of their construction work will be on the inside to get ready for manufacturing. Just as a reminder, this was a $54.5 million investment. They plan to create 141 jobs. And then lastly, just wanted to update you on Tropical Foods. This one's exciting because they are up and operational as we speak. Shameless plug on this slide for you that they are operational and hiring. They are looking to add about 100 jobs to their workforce as they get ready to ramp up to a third shift by the end of March. They are currently running two production lines. They are manufacturing frozen novelty desserts, ice cream desserts, in the old Dynamics Food Building at 1,001 East 33rd Street. As a reminder, their investment amount was $66.8 million, and at full build-out will create about 500 jobs. So that was the highlights of the companies I wanted to bring back to your attention this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. John Osborne is also here from Lita, if you have questions about companies we did not talk about tonight.
Thank you, Breonna. We really appreciate that. Thanks for the update. And yes, I do like to talk about 1 million pounds of mozzarella cheese every day.
Me too, especially when we're hungry.
Every day.
Yep.
Every day. All right. Anybody have any questions or comments from Breonna? Gilbert? Mr. Flores?
I'm excited to be here, okay? I think nine out of 10 projects that you mentioned or that we have talked about this afternoon, they just all happen to be in precinct 3.
You guys are doing something right over there.
So that brings a lot of joy to a lot of people.
Yeah.
Along with business and employment comes rooftops and other businesses, and we're excited. I'm excited to be here another few years if the court can put up with me. But I'm very excited to hear, everything is happening in East Lubbock, Northeast Lubbock. I also must mention, you have the cemetery that's coming in, the VA, that's in precinct 3, the medical examiner building is also in precinct 3, the multipurpose arena venue on North University is on precinct 3, the multi-task force, drug and task force building is coming up next to the jail also is in precinct 3. So am I excited? Of course. I'm very excited to finally, respectfully, we're doing something for East Lubbock, Northeast Lubbock, and I'm very, very proud. Very proud of me.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, well, thank you again to everyone for being here tonight. I think this is a great time for us to come together. Thank you to our county brothers and sisters for all their hard work, for the people of this area in West Texas. And at this time, city council will be adjourned.
And at this time, Lubbock Commissioners Court is now adjourned. Thank you all very much.